One, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Stevenville City Council to order. And as most of you are probably aware today, most of you have probably heard Cheryl and Savine, our mayor's wife, who has been fighting an epic battle against an insidious disease for an extended period of time. She has succumbed to that disease. So she has lost that battle, or the disease has won that battle. But I believe in my heart of heart that Cheryl and has won the war. And I believe today she is singing with the angels. And I can only imagine what glorious and wondrous things that she's already seen. So what I'd like to do is encourage everyone in the community of Stevenville. And when I think of Stevenville, I really think family, not community. So I would encourage the family of Stevenville to take this opportunity to lift the Savine family and every other family in town that's suffering and pain, grieving, lift them up and ask that they receive the strength and the compassion that they need at this moment. And I would specifically ask for God's graciousness to pour out on Cheryl and Savine so that she might truly rest in peace. And what I've done is I've asked Cheryl and Doug's longtime friend, Mr. Alan Nix, to lead us in a short prayer. So, Mr. Nix?
Please join me in prayer. Father, we come to your throne today humbly as your children, recognizing your grace and your mercy and your love for each of us. Father, we have lost a good friend, a valuable member of this community. She will be missed by many, many people for her many talents, for her love, for her spirit, for the great things that she brought to this community. Father, we ask at this time that you bless her family, Doug, and Kim, and Aaron. And Father, help them to go through the hard days that lay ahead, the difficult times that they face. Bless them. Help them be comforted. Father, wrap your arms around them and provide the strength and the comfort that you can. And Father, help us as we have an opportunity to do those same things for them. Father, there are many others in our community who are suffering with various diseases, especially COVID. We ask that you be with them also and their families and help them to overcome this disease and the other things that they are struggling with. I ask that you continue to bless this community. Father, bless Stacy and her family at their loss. Continue to provide the guidance and the insight and the encouragement that you provide to us each day. Continue to bless us. Continue to be merciful to us as we fail. And continue to help us move forward in the path that you have chosen for us. Father, today and every day, we're thankful for your son, for his love and sacrifice for us. We're thankful for the avenue of prayer that he opened for us. It's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Nix. We have not been having Citizens General discussion for since the emergency declaration went into being. But we have a gentleman that would like to speak to us tonight. So, Justin, if you'd come up.
I'm the only one?
You are the man.
Well, I didn't mean for that to happen. Well, that's okay.
I think Stacy will time you, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, well, I'll get right to it. So I'm Justin Sloss, and I don't get to vote for city council, but I do own 908 East Washington. I pay taxes on that property. I have one child that plays basketball in Spard, and I have another child that, well, they're both in Stevenville ISD. So, well, you know, I'm going to stick to my notes. Okay, you know what? The first thing is the Spard employees. Even masks are clearly optional in here. So I went into Spard to make my little complaint, and I'm going to get to the chase on that. The girls in there clearly want masks to be an option. The employees that work in Spard want masks to be an option. So, I mean, they're an option everywhere else, and I don't understand what happened there or where that communication got lost. But, so, I think all public places in Stevenville should have a special, a specific place, or at least a half section where masks are optional. Or say, at the Spard games, this side is mask-free if you want. This side, you wear a mask. I would start at the recreation, because you, some, in most of the city things I go into, even the water department, masks are an option. I don't know what happened at Spard, but the message got lost somewhere. There's a dictator over there. That's my opinion. Public areas. Oh, Stevenville ISD. Yes, I think the same thing should apply. And it actually does, because I've been off throughout some of the facilities at Stevenville ISD, and nobody ever says anything about the mask to me. There was this one incident on a, at my little girl's basketball game, and then I found out something else happened to others. And it's all back to the mask. It should be a choice. I've got something here about M or N-95 mask supposedly offer the correct protection, whereas most of these other masks may not. And so for these people that want to wear masks, let them wear the right mask. Get the information out there that maybe your mask isn't effective. And then, don't be mad at me for not wearing one. Wear the right mask and do, as a community, get the message out to correct your mask. And don't be upset with other people for not wearing one. Get the right kind of mask on. Okay? Or, there's a vaccine out. All kinds now. Someone can go get a vaccine. So for people to be upset about others not wearing masks at this point, calling the police is absurd. Absurd at a child's basketball game. I'm sorry. So I have five family members, three of which were local residents that died of cancer. Jared Don Slossen, Joe Byler, and Marion Byler were all residents of Ehrath County. John D., J.D. Slossen, and Anita Slossen, all dead of cancer in my family. So you get into things like signs, which I'm not good at, but genetics. My family specifically, we worry about cancer.
Mr. Slossen, your three minutes is up.
Cancer kills people in my family. If we're going to worry about something at our house, it's cancer, not COVID. No disrespect to COVID, but I don't recommend people wear sunscreen all the time like it's been recommended to me. I'm not going to wear sunscreen.
Thank you, Mr. Slossen. We appreciate you coming forward and bringing us the information. For the record, I'll just state that we do have a quorum present tonight. We are going to follow regular order, even though we have a couple of members that are not here. First order on the agenda is the, consider the approval of an order of election for the general election to be held May the first. This is kind of a legal mechanism. The city has four places, Place 1, 3, 5, and 7, that will be up on the May ballot, and this is simply to place those places on the ballot. Jason or Stacy, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Questions from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd make the motion that we call the general election for May 1st, authorizing the election of Places 1, 3, 5, and 7 for the city council.
I'll second that.
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Mr. Cook. So I have a motion by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Cook, to call the general election for the city of Stevenville. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify with nay. That election is called for. Second item on the agenda tonight is a, consider the approval of an ordinance ordering a bond election to be held on that same ballot, May the 1st. And Mr. King has a presentation that he wants to share with us tonight. Before he does that, there's a couple of things that I'd like to say. One is that I've heard a lot of conversation about the timing of this. I want everybody to keep this in mind as we go through this. This, we are here tonight, and it is the culmination of months and months and months of work by the council members, the staff, bond counsel, financial advisors. There are countless man-hours that have gone into this presentation and this deliberation here tonight. And I just want everybody to remember, we did not take a fast track to get to this point here tonight. This is, some of these items that are on these bonds, we've been talking about for two years. So it's not a fast track. And then the second item, I think it's important that everybody understand that here tonight, what we're doing is we're simply deciding whether or not these bond proposals should be put on a ballot for the voters of Stevenville to decide what they want to do. Voters have the ultimate choice here. They can reject them all, they can accept them all, they can do à la carte, reject some, accept some. But it comes down to the voters. So our decision here tonight is simply to place, whether or not to place those bond items on the ballot in May. So, Mr. King, floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council, as we've moved through these discussions, we've talked about the different propositions. Can you move forward for me? Yes. So Proposition A, that would be on the ballot, would be a combined use facility that would combine our senior citizen center, recreation center, and library. That has images of the current facilities as they are now. And that would be an $8 million initiative that would be on the ballot. There's a couple of, you know, kind of proposed layouts of what a new facility may look like from the outside. And then just a prospective potential floor plan in space utilization of what that facility may look like on the inside. Proposition B is part of our historic downtown revitalization. As you're aware, we're currently in the planning process of what that may look like. And so in that image, you see kind of a draft of what some of that may look like. Right now, we've targeted $5,385,000 worth of projects in the downtown area to include Bell Nap, Columbia College, to redo the streets, sidewalks, lighting, curb, gutter, all those things in that area. And that's what would be included in that initiative. Proposition C is street improvements for Bell Nap. And this excludes the portion of Bell Nap that would be included in the downtown revitalization piece. This would go from Mason Street up to the railroad tracks as it currently exists and would include a complete redo. And would also allow us to keep the brick portions that we currently have to maintain the historic downtown area. That's a $2,160,000 initiative that would be on the ballot. Proposition D is a large section of street improvements in the neighborhoods of First, Second, Fifth, Sixth, Cage, and Swan Streets. And so that would allow for major improvements in that area of town for those streets. And that carries a $3,730,000 initiative on the bond. And then Proposition E would be a $2 million extension of the next phase of the Boski River Trail. And so that's kind of a quick look at what each initiative would cover. And so from there, we would ask you to consider the ordinance that is in front of you. And when you consider it, please do so with a roll call vote.
Any questions for Mr. King? Hearing none. Pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'll move that we approve ordinance.
Twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero five.
Ordering a bond election held on May 1. That's pertains to initiatives as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion? Not, hearing none, we'll move to the vote. And we will do this by roll call. I will start with Place 2.
Yes, sir. Talk about that. I hadn't moved it either. Yes.
Okay. Place 3?
Aye.
4?
Aye.
5?
Aye.
Place 6?
Yes.
Place 7?
Yes.
Place 8 is not here, and Place 1 votes aye as well. So that passes unanimously with the council as present. All right, we move to the regular agenda. And first item there is to consider the approval of a resolution that initiates the abandonment of a street in the 800 block of North Lillian. Mr. King?
Yes, sir. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Williams to kind of explain where this came from.
Nick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council, their staff was approached by Tarleton State University to abandon the section of Lillian Street from Shirley to Frye. Several years ago, a major portion of Lillian was abandoned to Washington Street. This was the remaining portion of that section of Lillian. At the time, the initial section was turned over to, or sold to Tarleton. They did not own the remaining property. Since then, Tarleton has acquired the remaining property. Staff does support the initiative to begin the process for a recommendation from P&amp;Z. I'm glad to answer your questions.
Questions for Nick. Okay, so Nick, could you just kind of walk through the process? Because this is just the first step of a process. Is that correct?
It is just the first step of the process, yes, sir. So, the first part of this means that the initiative will go to P&amp;Z. There'll be a formal recommendation presented to the council from P&amp;Z. There are several items in Chapter 95 that allow us to present that to the council. There are two methodologies, because state law prohibits the city from giving away any property. But there can be an evaluation or appraisal performed by Tarleton State, or there is a methodology that allows us to assume the land values adjacent to that property to come up with figures.
Any other questions for Nick?
Tarleton does now own the properties on both sides of this right-of-way, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All the way out to Frye?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And there are utilities under this that we'll need to maintain, the water line specifically?
There is a water line, and there is a sewer line. Thank you. There's a 12-inch water line from Shirley to Frye that the city would need to maintain. There's also a 6-inch sewer line in that area that only serves Tarleton, so it acts as a service line. And if and when that property does go to Tarleton's use, we would abandon that line, and they would maintain it as a service line. So, in summary, what we would do is maintain an easement to maintain that 12-inch existing water line.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Pleasure of the council.
One question before we...
Yes, sir.
One question for Nick before we get into this. Shirley Street, which is where this kind of starts and goes over to Frye.
Yes, sir.
Shirley Street is a city street at this location, correct?
Yes, sir.
At this corner, and will remain, even though Tarleton owns both sides of Shirley Street too?
From, yes, the Lillian portion of the intersection would be the abandoned piece. Everything west, I'm sorry, east of Lillian would remain.
Yes, I was just referring to the Shirley Street. They own both sides of, one of the arguments was, well, we, they own both sides of Lillian Street. There, too, they also own both sides of Shirley Street, all the way through there. And are we going to be seeing something from them? Is something in the offing, or anything like that, with regard to the abandonment of Shirley Street?
Well, I can't speak for Tarleton, but Ms. Lori Beatty is here. She's the, I'm just going to throw you under the bus, Ms. Beatty.
I'm led to that. So Lori Beatty, CFO at Tarleton. The reason that we approached the city about this particular portion is, we did a lot of work down what used to be Lillian Street that ran through campus to create a pedestrian walkway. And we stopped right there before Shirley Street. There's some work that needs to be done. That intersection is not in great repair. So before the university undertook a project to correct those issues there at that street, we wanted to go ahead and reach out to the city and say, you know, do we want to go ahead and acquire all of it to Frye so that that improvement could be made at one time and not have to come back and patch it up later, if you will. At this point, there is not any discussion about Shirley Street. Will that happen in the future? I, we don't have any immediate plans to make that request.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Lori or Nick?
Mr. Pro Tem, I'd make the motion. We pass Resolution number 2021 dash R dash...
Zero three.
Zero three, authorizing city staff to prepare procedures for abandoning a portion of Lillian Street as presented.
Second. I've got a motion by Mr. Thurman, seconded by Mr. Robinson, to approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So that resolution is adopted and approved. Next item on the agenda is very similar. It is to consider the approval of a resolution initiating the abandonment of a portion of Shirley Street located between Paddock and Fort Worth and Western Railroad. So, Nick, you want to take that one, too?
Yes, sir, absolutely. This is very similar, with one very distinct difference. This portion of Shirley is undeveloped at this time. The process would be the same, the abandonment. And staff does support the recommendation to present the process. There is a 4, I'm sorry, a 6-inch utility line running along the back of the property. So we would have the same process. The abandonment, the city would require an easement for that existing sanitary sewer line. There are no other utilities in that right-of-way.
Who would commission the appraisal? You said Tarleton would do it on the other one. Who would commission the appraisal here?
So typically, what we do, especially on these staff-led initiatives, rather than having an appraisal, which would be done by the developer at their option, is to use the second process. And that is to look at the appraisal district's land value numbers and present in that method.
Okay. Any other questions for Nick on this one?
Nick, it looks like Shirley Street is not really even finished out.
It is completely undeveloped. There's no pavement there at all.
It just stops right there at Paddock.
Yes, sir.
Pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021 dash R...
Zero four.
Zero six?
Zero four.
Zero four, I'm sorry, authorizing the procedure to begin for the abandonment of the undeveloped part of Shirley Street discussed.
Second. So the motion by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Cook, to move, have staff move forward with this abandonment initiative, initiation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That passes. So we'll move forward to the council committee meetings, and we're going to start off with Parks and Leisure Services and Mr. Robinson.
Second, Mayor Pro Tem. On January 19th, the Parks and Leisure Services Committee met to discuss the location of the maintenance building in the city park. There'd been a little concern from the community over the placement of it and the overall layout. Staff brought us three options to consider, and the committee brings forward a positive recommendation, unanimous positive recommendation for Option A. And I'll go ahead and make that in a motion, if I may. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve Option A, which leaves the maintenance building where it is, eliminates the fenced equipment yard, and allows the park workers to keep their equipment at the MSC.
Second. I have a motion by Nick and a second by Justin to approve Option A as presented. Any further discussion?
Maybe one point of clarification needed, because it's, it is a new location for the building, but it is the location that was presented to the committee. So I don't know if that's confusing or not, but if you say leave it where it is, the implication is it's going to stay down there by the wreck hole, which is not correct.
Okay. We'll leave the new building where it is.
In the new location.
In the new location.
Where the slab has been poured.
Where the slab has been poured.
Yeah.
Everybody clear on that? Any questions? Hearing none, again, this is a motion by Nick and a second by Justin. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Option A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. So Option A is the big winner.
And that completes my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next committee is Public Works. Mr. Nix?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The Public Works Committee had three items on our agenda. We actually took no action on any of these, but we want to bring a report back to the council. The first item was the Main Street Program. The Texas Community Development Block grant offers some help with some revitalization in certain areas as presented. We need to eliminate, or we need to come up with a recommendation within the designated downtown historic district that will serve as a catalyst to hopefully revitalize that area and at the same time, help us with some of the existing issues that we know we need to do. Staff is working on that recommendation, and they will bring that recommendation to us later at a committee meeting so that we can have a project in mind when we apply for this grant with the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. There was no action taken for this item, and there's none necessary now. The next item was also a Texas Community Development Block grant, but this item required some information because of the criteria that it was based on that would require literally door-to-door requests from people for household income and for information that we did not feel comfortable soliciting from them. It was the discussion at the time and the consensus of the committee that we would not pursue this based on that and based on the fact that we would probably not score high enough to receive that grant fund anyway. And we felt like that the negative publicity and the negative reaction from the community would not merit such things. Again, there was no action taken from the committee and none now. The last was harbor drive improvements. The, I believe, 90% plans for harbor improvements were presented.
Yes, sir.
There was a significant amount of discussion about some of the layout. The staff in Fries and Nichols have been working on this to regard, regarding the placement of some of the meetings, medians in this development. There was no formal action taken that night, and there's none necessary tonight. We will come back at the public, the next Public Works Committee meeting with a formal recommendation for the placement of those medians and to be acted on, and then draw back to council at that time. That is the end of my report. There was no action necessary on that either.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nix.
Thank you.
We will move along to Development Services Committee. Mr. Huckabee is not here. Steve, are you going to make this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On January 19th, the Development Services Committee met to discuss the subdivision ordinance and the waiver process related to sidewalks, curb, and gutters, reviewed six different options, and directed staff to come back to council. Reviewed six different options and directed staff to come back to council with the draft ordinance for consideration. The ordinance in your packet is a culmination of discussions leading up to January 19th. And we were asking for council direction on the passage of this ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have related to the proposed draft.
And there was no, in that meeting, there was no official action taken by the committee because you were still in the process of putting this together. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We had brought six different options to the committee. The committee opted for option A with certain modifications. One of those being that the ordinance would provide staff the opportunity to do a review of certain waiver requests. So that is in the ordinance. There was also a desire that we have that these waiver requests not apply for areas that are in the sidewalk improvement area, which was drafted or adopted by resolution in 2019. And there was also a decision to include a 25% fee for waivers that are approved at a staff level, which will be redirected into the sidewalk improvement program for the projects within the sidewalk area or within the sidewalk improvement program, cost share program.
Okay, and so the language that you've presented here would simply be inserted as an amendment into the existing ordinance?
That is correct, sir. It is basically added as a paragraph three in the, in the ordinance and it would allow for staff-led waiver decisions. Waivers that do not qualify under the, the waiver process set forth by staff authority would then come back to council by appeal through the PNZ and then, of course, to council based on the PNZ recommendation. And then any approved waiver would be required to pay the 25% fee into the sidewalk improvement program through the cost share program.
Any other questions for Steve?
Just say that the speed at which they worked in terms of analyzing this, I thought they did a fantastic job. I appreciate the work that, and I don't, Brandon is not here to appreciate, have to receive that. But Steve, thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
I think developers will appreciate it too.
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Streamline their process.
Absolutely.
Very well.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if, if a motion is in order, I'd like to make that motion that we approve ordinance number 2021 dash zero dash.
Zero six.
Zero six. An ordinance of the City of Stevieville amending chapter 155, section seven, relief from the subdivision design standards, the code ordinance of the City of Stevieville.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Robinson to approve the amendment as it's been presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That amendment carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And that is the end? That was the only item on your report? That was the only item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to nominations committee. Mr. Cook.
We have two names to present as, from the nominating committee for two vacancies on the library advisory board. The nominating committee would like to recommend to the council for place three, Kate Barton, and for place seven, Tynell Slappy, as nominees for the library advisory board. And we'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
My second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Nick to accept these two nominations to the library advisory board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Then those appointments are made, sir.
Thank you.
Is that the end of your report?
It is. That is the end of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the CETA report. Jeff is looking lovely tonight.
Yes. Happy to be with you as, yeah, Jeff Sanford cannot join us this evening. So I am happy to be here and share with you for just a few moments, a little about some of our project updates at the CETA office. So as we've flipped the calendar and we're into New Year, CETA's economic development efforts remain in full swing. So on that note, over the last six days, we have had three different development groups here in Stevieville. Last week, we hosted and coordinated meetings for STX Washington Partners, who's the group behind the Washington Commons Development. As an update to the public, site work for that project is well underway and vertical construction is planned to commence May or June. The lineup for Washington Commons is Hobby Lobby, TJ Maxx, Old Navy, Five Below, and Ulta. We will have several more retailers to announce in the coming weeks. In fact, the center is actually 94%, leased at this point. On another project, we are well underway with the Fireside District. This residential neighborhood is located on Tarleton Street. Spectre Housing is currently in town and this is the multifamily portion of the project. Their expected completion date will be late summer in time for the fall semester. Of course, this is the development that will also have single-family homes built in as part of that development. For two days this week, we will be hosting the Odors of Clean, the odor, the Owners of Clean Control. This is the $100 million company that we were able to secure before the end of last year and they purchased the old Raylock building. So the owner will be in, we've got several meetings set up. They're in discussions and design phase of refurbishing and refitting that facility. And they will have their first local hire made by the end of this week. Lastly, there has been some movement in the area of Project Blue. They have formally, formally enlisted marketing brokers who have placed a sign at this site. And their initial focus took off with great speed. They're getting wonderful responses. The focus, initial focus is on eateries, but as that progresses and our dealings with them continue, we will keep you posted. And in closing, as you know, CETA has been fully engaged with the downtown revitalization plan alongside the city. We have hosted or participated in numerous meetings over the past few days and weeks. And we continue to support the city's bold move on this and other community projects. So with that brief update, if you have any questions, I'll entertain those at the end.
Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And Ms. Monica, please move to give us the financial reports.
Get the mask off. Mayor Pro Tem, council. This is the budget review for December 31st, three months into our fiscal year. Things were pretty much as I would have anticipated. For our property tax, we received 2.52 million in the month of December, which took us to 173,000 or 577% over the funds collected through December last year. This has us at 47.84% of the budget. We had anticipated to only be at 46.63% of our budget. And I will say, we, I saw the article in Beneath the Surface and I did talk to Jennifer Carey this afternoon. We are actually at 91% currently. There's still some e-checks that, as long as people were postmarked February 1st, since the 31st was Sunday and the e-checks that were done as of the first, they gave everybody through the first. So anything that was postmarked or done online as of the first will be counted. We would anticipate to be at 94% and we were at 91 as of this afternoon and they still have some things that will come through. So it looks like we're gonna be hitting them pretty close to where we anticipated. For our sales tax, we received 542,000 in sales tax in December, which is 18,000 or 3.36 more than last year. The 1.86 million that we collected fiscal year to date is 29.94% of our budget, which is higher than the 25.67 that we had anticipated. For our hot funds, the lodging establishments have reported 56,000 in hotel occupancy taxes through December as compared to 132,000 through last December. We do have four entities that are one or more months delinquent, which we are going to be working on that.
Is that adjusted for the quarterly payments that we were getting, the 132 from last year?
No, that, that's, that's October through December for last year and we're only at 54 October through December of this year. Yes, sir. We spent 175 in hotel occupancy tax funds through December this year. Last year was only 71,000. Obviously, this year, our, our, the additional spending is because of our day tripper contract and also the All-American barrel race that was approved by council. The target budget for operating revenue is 8.08 million. We received 8.19 million through December, which is 108,000 over our target budget. This is a result of our sales taxes, property taxes, and service charges. The target budget for operating expenditures is 5.5 million. We spent 5.32 million through December, resulting in 230,000 under our target budget. Operating revenue last year was 8.35 million. The current year is 8.19 million, which resulted in a 154,000 decrease. Our increases in our property taxes, sales taxes, and building permit offset the reduction in service charges and interest on investments. However, there was no offset. We received a large insurance proceeds last year for our public safety building for the storm damage and obviously, we haven't got it this year, which is not a bad thing. And you'll see in our operating expenditures, last year were 5.47 million. The current year is 5.32 million, which also results in a decrease of 154. So the offset in expenditures is the same offset in revenues. So we're looking good this year so far, knock on wood.
Questions for Monica?
Is that just coincidence?
I think it is just coincidence, but, but I mean, yes, we, on those insurance proceeds, we would spend the money. So, you know, not having the revenue doesn't surprise me that we haven't spent the money either, though. It's just a coincidence that the numbers were identical.
Thank you, Monica.
You're welcome.
All right. What do we do with consent agenda?
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Cook to approve consent as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Consent is passed. Comments by a city manager or acting as city manager? Who's gonna, who's gonna do it?
Jason here.
Jason.
And so with that, I'd say welcome back to Mr. Barnes and glad he's sitting next to me this evening. Couple of things to note. Last day to file for a place on the ballot for city council is February 12th. City offices will be closed in observance of President's Day on February 15th. And then just lastly, real quick, I just want to say thank you to Chief Chu and his staff and Assistant Chief Elliott and then all of our community partners, Dr. Doggett, and those other doctors, pharmacists, Mr. VW Stevens, and everybody else that, that has allowed us to get the vaccination center open and will open again this week. So thank you, Chief. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll just start right here. Mr. Pendleton, comments?
Nothing.
Mr. Hasky.
Thoughts and prayers go out to the Savine family. Those are wonderful words, Mark, that you shared at the beginning of the council meeting. So we're thinking about Doug and his family right now. To echo Jason's comments, I had a chance to tour the facilities in the Bocce River Center. They're top-notch. If they'll get us the doses, Chuck and Jimmy and the rest of the logistics team is, it's unbelievable. It is absolutely unbelievable what they've done and in the short time that they've done it in. So hopefully, our state representatives and dishes are listening into this meeting and they'll send us as many vaccines as possible. And then I, I can think of no better democratic opportunity for the citizens of Stevieville than what we approved tonight. And while we are the representatives in the Democratic Republic and we identified some of the glaring needs that will also boost economic development in this community, it is now up to the voters. And that is the contractual obligation that we have with them and it is their choice. And so I appreciate what this council has done and I look forward to, to hearing their voice in May. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thurman.
Alan, good to see you here this evening. Good to see that you're on the mend. Express, personally express my deepest condolences to Doug and the Savine family as well as to Stacy with, with the loss that you suffered this week. I would also echo the, the comments about the vaccination center. Had a chance to tour that last week as well and it's pretty amazing what they managed to put together in such a short period of time and the, the amount of coordination that goes on there and the community partners that are involved along with the city is, is pretty amazing to see. There were pharmacists from several pharmacies in town. There were folks there from SMSC helping and it was, and some folks from the county too. So it was great to see everybody. And, and I just can't thank you enough for, all of you for coordinating that and to Dr. Doggett. I know he, he played a huge role in that, so. And then lastly, we, we did do something pretty historic tonight as far as the City of Stevieville is concerned. I don't think that's been done in quite some time. There's been a bond election called. And, and I'd say the same thing that, that Justin said. It's, that is democracy in its greatest form. All we did was take some ideas and now 100% of the power lies in the citizens to make the decision. And, and so that's, that's the way democracy is supposed to work and, and I'm proud that we're putting that decision in the citizen's hands. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson?
Nothing.
Mr. Cook?
Well, I would really like to echo some of what Jason was saying and, as well as Justin and Ricky. I had a little different perspective with Chief Chu out at, at the new center where we're vaccinating people. Because I had, I was, I escorted my 100-year-old father-in-law out there to get his shot and his first one. And let me tell you, there couldn't have been anybody who was more excited about going in and getting the shot than he was. And I was just amazed at how, how well organized, how friendly, how helpful people were in going through this process and doing it. And I was really proud of this community. It was well done, well done. And the, and, and everyone who was involved in it, well, gosh, thank you for putting it together. The, our, our prayers go out to the Savine family. They've gone through a very difficult time, but there's a lot of people in this community that have been going through a lot of difficult times, including Stacy and her family and, and there's so many more. We all have known the Savines and as our mayor and his, his wife, his beautiful wife that was such a natural part of the community too. And our hearts go out to them. They, she will be missed and, and we pray for their family. Tonight, we did do something that was, we didn't have a lot of discussion about, but we've discussed this for two years, it seems like. And, and that is the bond issue. We've talked about it. We have played with the numbers. We have talked about the projects and what should be included and what shouldn't be included and how much is, should it be for and how much can we get in there and can we use other forms of financing to magnify these amounts so that we can do? so that we can do other things like Harbin Drive and like Long Street and like, and I think we've been able to come up with a lot of those. I think it's a great step. It's up to the citizens of Stevieville now to decide if this is what you'd want, if this is what you want in your community. If you want these things, we're just trying to point out, give you the opportunity to decide whether or not you want the same thing we've had or whether you want something a lot better. And it's your decision, and that is pure democracy. That's the way it works. So I want to thank my fellow councilmen. This was a project that we've all worked on together, and I think we made a great decision tonight. So thank you, and I appreciate working with each one of you. And we appreciate working with the citizens of this great community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nick.
I hate to sound like a broken record, but I also, I heard nothing but good things about our work out there with the vaccine, our departments and our citizens and all of the cooperation. Everybody that I heard anything from had nothing but compliments, which is unique in itself, but it was appreciated, and I want to share that with the chief and with his department and with all those others that were participating. The bond election, some of those discussions started as about 2010. They've been going that long because of the multipurpose or multi-use or however you want to call that facility. We kicked it around in various forms in various locations, but we never, until tonight, were willing to take it to the voters, and I think that's a huge step to take it to them and let them voice their opinion. I wish the people in Washington would take note of that and give us the opportunity to vote on some of the things that they do. That's a different story, and we probably shouldn't go there, but I think we made a good move tonight, and I think we have put some reasonable opportunities in front of the citizens for them to make choices and decisions and literally lay a course of action for the city for the future. And I thank the council and staff. Staff has worked tirelessly on this, and I recognize that, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity that we have to move forward with this community, and it is a huge step for us and for the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other items on the agenda, so this meeting will stand adjourned at 6:22. Thank you all.